So this is just a normal meeting, so I won't be muted, so if you want to mute yourself and unmute yourself.
Okay.
Okay, first item is to have the Health Department come and share something with us.
You want, we can just stand here.
Yeah.
Let's just stand here.
Yeah.
We're gonna stand.
Turn the microphone off.
Yeah, turn the microphone off, that way it's recorded.
I'm just here to support. Okay. Is that on? This is not green, Ma. Okay, so, um, the reason why we're here is because we have a lot of different accounting things, and I hope that you got the letter that explained everything that needs to be done. But this needs to be voted on, on the 17th, and I'm gonna be in Florida. So I won't be here in, to be able to present this to you. So I wanted to be here today, kind of go over everything, so when you do have the opportunity to vote on it on the 17th, you'll already have your questions answered. So, um, if you received the letter, um, there was, uh, actually five items that I kind of wanted to speak on. And, um, the first one was, um, we were awarded an additional amount of $3,218 from the state of Indiana that went with our HFI funds. So they originally sent a letter, which I wasn't there, the Health Department, when they originally did it in the beginning of the year, of how much money we were gonna receive. And then they actually sent the funds this year, and it ended up being more than what they had quoted to us. So we budgeted for one amount, and then we ended up getting $3,218 additional. So what that means is that we need you guys to appropriate that in a meeting to, um, the 1160 fund, in order for us to be able to use that money. Because we had to, um, submit it in red cap, the budget, with that amount of money in it. So that'll be something that you'll have to vote on, to see if I have any questions on that. Then the second thing is appropriation carryover. So, um, the state of Indiana, if you have the HFI funds, let you carry over the funds from the year before, but there's a format that you have to do. So the first thing that we have to do is go to our board and ask them for permission to be able to carry over the funds. Then we have to come to council to have permission to carry over the funds. And then we have them appropriated to the auditor's office. And then once they're appropriated, then we can utilize them, and I'll tell you what we want to do with it. So, um, we have $59,738.67. Why do we have that much money left over? Was because in accounting, last year at the beginning of the year, when they set up the salary ordinance, they took the funds out of the tobacco fund, which luckily, we had plenty of money in there, and it came right out, it came out the entire year. So the year had closed, and I had noticed that when the year closed, that we still did not have the appropriation of those funds moved, and I thought they needed to go to 1159. So, um, I sat down with Julia, and her and I went over everything, and we actually became mold detectives, and found out that it was actually coming out of the tobacco fund. So I had to do the proper paperwork to the state of Indiana, because that's our local, um, health tobacco, uh, fund that we have, that you, that, it's 912. So whenever you do anything in 912, you have to ask the state of Indiana whether or not you can use it. So I had to go back and do a, hey, I'm new, forgive me, letter. Um, and then I had to have Dr. Conway sign some paperwork for me, and submit it to the state, and tell them what we used the money for. And they okayed it. So now I have this $59,000 left. So I did sit down and talk with Elizabeth Westfield, which is my advisor from the state of Indiana that works with me on 1160. And she's the financial person. And she said, well, I noticed that last year, when they turned in their Form 1s, they did not put anything in capital. And you can put, um, 10%, so it's 38,000. So, um, and we were allowed to have 10% from the year before, which would've been 17,500. And we are in need of a new automobile, because we have one that's a little over 100,000 miles. So I thought, well, the smart thing would be, is to save that money, and let it roll over into capital, and let's get some money together for a car, so we don't have to try to take it out of, or come to the commissioners for funds. So our plans are to, um, take $42,921 out of that money, payroll money that didn't get used, move it to the capital fund, and add an additional to that, um, in order to have the $51,359 in that capital rollover. And then I'm gonna take $6,138.25 that was just left over lines for office supplies, membership dues, the trailer, clinic supplies, and printing advertisement, and move it back into those lines. And that'll be leaving us $2,240.62 that I need to sit down with them. We're sitting down this week and deciding where that money goes, after you approve it on the 17th. Any questions about that?
So it's all HFI money?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, did your board talk about, my only thought on that would be, gosh, I hate to see it used for something that's not promoting the health of the county directly.
Well, it's allowable. And it is, because the, 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 the actual physical item that we would be buying goes out and does all the septic checks, that's why it's got so many miles on it. It's the one that they drive to all those, you know, all the different, um, septic fields, all the testing that they do, water testing that they do, and all of that. So it is used, it's an actual tool that is used for that purpose.
Yeah. Is that, I mean, it seems like the HFI money, was, I mean, does that deal, is, are we putting HFI money in the septics? Is that a goal of the program?
Oh, yeah.
What's, help, catch me up there.
Okay, so on the HFI, which I did bring this, and I kind of thought, you know what, they really need to just see this.
Because the way I'm looking at that is, this is one of the only pools of money
Right.
that we can use for critical needs.
That's right.
Critical needs, that are not being met currently within the.
That's what, well, we have KPIs now. We have, we have actual visions, we actually know, the nurses and the Health Department's side, on both sides, because we'll work down the vector control to help out with the tick situations. So we're, we're all getting on the same page, and starting to get all this together.
I mean, that, I guess that's just my point, is, you know, we've always seemed to have been able to have really nice vehicles for the Health Department, we can fund that through other channels. But what we're missing is the ticks, mental health, all that other stuff.
Yes, I know.
So I just, typically, I'd be, this would be, I mean, in my mind, a great approach, like, hey, we gotta cover our bills, but with this particular fund, it just, it just gives me a little pause.
So if you don't want it used on that, there's plenty of room for it to fit, and how we have to divide it, just so you guys know, is the HFI funds, which you can go on the Save Indiana IDOH website, go into red cap, and you can see the entire plan in there of what we have submitted to the state of Indiana.
Yeah.
Because it has to be divided 60/40, and we were told next year it'll be divided 80/20, which means 80 to the health side and 20 to the environmental side. So they want more concentrated on what could be used in health.
I agree.
Less than what can be used in the environmental. So, um, we have weekly updates on how this stuff is happening, and to train all of us that are, that are working through these funds, in order to be able to do so.
So I'm, I'm one out of seven.
Right.
That's mine, respectively, on it. I think it could be much more impactful, and, and again, this approach is nine out of 10 times a good approach.
Right.
But on this fund, it just worries me that we're giving up.
It worried then, though, that we weren't holding back capital funds.
And, and I know we've got some work at the Health Department, that's what I thought.
Well, I'm going, I'm coming to that.
I know you're coming to that.
That's right.
And maybe that is a better use, but I, I just, you, you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Is the, is the current vehicle still under warranty?
No. It's done.
Okay, so that's a point, if they don't.
If it starts having problems, then it's.
Maybe hold on to it for another year, but if something happens, they got a $3,000 repair, that's $3,000, they gotta pay for that, plus depreciation. What are you planning on doing with the vehicle?
Trading it in.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Trade in, or you gonna try to sell it through?
I don't know. Whichever one that, I, we haven't really sat down and spoke about that, we talk about that in groups. So, um, and Ernie's like, kind of the, the head of the, the car guy. So he takes them and, you know, gets the oil changes on everything, including the nurses' vehicles. Um, him and I go out and clean them off every day when it snows, and make sure that everything's taken care of. So, um, they're maintenance, they're very well taken care of. Um, he just knows that this one has a little good time, before it's like, not worth even trading in, kind of thing.
Okay. Trade, trade in is probably the least beneficial, was, I mean, if we could directly sell.
We can do that through GovDeals.
Yeah.
Yeah. And usually, I, I mean, it's amazing what people pay for some stuff on there, so.
Yeah.
But to that point, um, the more, you know, if they spend, wait another year, they've got another year depreciation on it, another year of possible, you know, a couple thousand dollars in repairs, so, I mean, it's, and, I mean, if you're talking about HFI money, other funds, I mean, it's, you know, money's, money's fungible. You don't spend it, if you don't spend this on that, you're gonna spend it from somewhere else on this, so something else is gonna be, you know, either way, something's gonna be impacted, so.
I, I agree, and I, no question, well, I mean, I assume you've determined you need a new vehicle, no problem with that.
It is, and we've just been looking at where we can take the money from.
Right, right. The question is, where do you pay for it from?
That's right.
Pull it from a fund that could greatly benefit the public for kind of critical needs. I, I just think we should go some, to another fund to pay for it. It, it's not that I don't think you should buy another one, it's just not from these funds. My thought. Yep.
There, there, we do have a couple of other funds, we still have some money that's left in the local tobacco funds. Um, but we kind of, uh, they kind of guard that money, I'm learning, so like, when COVID hit, and they had to open up all those clinics and do everything that they did, they used that money to take care of that. Um, even though we did get reimbursed for some of that money from the federal government, it did bring down the amount of money that were in those trust funds. So, um, and that's something you'll see, I think I even put it in there, um, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, so yes.
You checked on all the, all the transfers, and everything's good, you're able to do everything you're doing, and... Everything's allowable with all the.
Tobacco funds.
With the transfers.
Yes, the tobacco funds are limited to what we have to do. Um, I actually talked to them about some of the monies that was left over, we were going to have to have for the building. Um, I actually also talked to Elizabeth Westfall about, uh, what we did need to do to the building, and so she was also the one that helped me, um, determine whether or not we could use the leftover clinic money. So, um, that's another thing that we're gonna discuss. Okay. So, but yes, I agree too, that it has to go for something with health, but what this would do is whatever that amount of money is, would take off of the environmental side. So, um, it's not a nurse car, it's, it's actually an environmental car, so it would not deplete anything that we already have planned for the health side.
Good.
Um, and it was set aside for payroll, so it wasn't like, already built in the budget for something for health, so that's kind of why I kind of lean towards that, but if you want to still look somewhere else, we can do.
I do, I'd like you to pour that into public health, critical needs, and, and find it. You know, we, 100,000 miles ago, we knew we were gonna need another vehicle, so it's not a surprise. And, and we paid for them all in the past, without dipping into those funds, so let's do it like we normally do it.
Okay.
Rob the public health money.
All right. All right, so then the next thing is, um, I wanted to talk to you guys, because I'm gonna have to have some money appropriated to the, um, line item that's in 1159, that is a payroll line that pays for our health officer. So last year, um, I did my research, um, we advertised $27,000, um, we, you got, um, actually DLGF had it posted for $27,000, they approved $27,000, you guys voted in $27,000, but $21,000 was appropriated in the LAL system. So at the end of the year, when Dr. O'Stryke received his W2, he said, oh, I'm short, and he was short. Short in the amount of, um, how do I have that on there?
$52,060.
So we went back, did our investigations, realized that it was true, went through all his payroll, added it up by hand, and said, okay, this is what he's short.
Okay.
So we went on ahead and paid him at the end of the year, or in January, for last year's money, but that's going to leave Dr. Conway's line short before the end of the year. So I need to appropriate that funds, because it rolled down into cash balances, and, and because you did receive it from Gateway, they get, DLGF did give you a check for $27,000.
Okay, so Susan, and I can't, sorry, I can't hear you.
She's there.
Oh, she's everywhere.
Yes.
Uh, we can't, I think you're still muted, maybe, can we hear you?
Yep.
There you are. Um, sounds like two things, one, we need to do, uh, and, our, well, I guess most of, is our appropriation this year good?
Yes.
Okay. But we haven't.
So what we, right.
So what's the issue?
So we have to advertise.
But we need the 27 brought back into your budget, basically.
Not the 27, we need the 52. So what we have to, what we have to do is we just have to advertise, and then you guys have to vote it in, that it's appropriated from the cash balances on the, on that, that fund, and which is there, because, because it was given to you guys last year. Um, and then, once it's brought back up, Julia and the auditor's office will put it in that payroll line, and you'll pay out fine at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, and then, the other thing that I was here for is, um, we had a mold investigation done on our building, and, um, yeah, it was just by happenstance, when they were going to do the highway, uh, Ernie asked me if we wanted to do our building, and I said, sure, because I wanted to kind of do a test thing, so it came out not so good. So we have mold in like, three different areas that is really high, and then the other area is just moderate. So the investigation led to the fact that the, um, actual hydration system to the, uh, two furnaces that are upstairs is not working correctly. And if you go upstairs, it's more than obvious. It's corroded, it's got mold growing all over the outside of it. The ventilation system, Chris, less is hard, has, went up there and redid all of it, and put extra filters in to try to combat what we're dealing with just right now. Um, the humidifying and the dehumidifying isn't working correctly, the pipes are, have, yeah.
It's a mess.
It's a mess. So it needs to be replaced, we're looking at right around $50,000 to replace the furnace, and, um, around $20,000 to actually have the whole building cleaned. Um, which would, it looks like it'd be a little over $70,000 to do so. So I contacted the state Indiana, State Board of Accounts, Lori Rogers, had a conversation with her about the 40, um, 4016 returns of fund health clinic monies. It's $121,055.12 that's in there. Um, she looked into it, she sent me, um, the information on how to appropriate that fund, because it is an existing fund, the money is still there, it's just not in an expense line. So it would need to be advertised, and voted on, and put in an expense line, and she said, if she had a suggestion, that we would put it in for, um, building maintenance. And then that way, we could go on ahead, and as it being in a maintenance line, fix anything that needs to be fixed in the building. Um, we've got a quote up right now, we don't have back, so I don't know how much that's gonna be, but it has like, a concrete board that's in the ceiling that cannot be removed, um, but it's very porous, and so it needs to be kilt, sealed, and then painted over the top. So I'm, I'm getting a quote on that, so that's also additional, it's a pretty big.
Yeah. That's, I've seen that ceiling, and it's gonna take some serious paint to.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
So, um, in lieu of all of that, I would like for you guys to vote on the 17th, to move that money to a usable line, so we can take care of the clinic that we actually do, I read through, I have, this is the actual paperwork that comes with this grant. The grant was actually, uh, finished in 2010, um, and it says that once it is finished, that the, it doesn't really speak much, and I talked to Judy Swift, Pal Droll, about this, because it doesn't really speak much about what you do with what's left over. Um, it just, but it does speak periodically, over and over and over, that this is to take care of the working poor and the poor to do clinical services, which we do every single day. They do TV tests, they do, um, vaccinations, they do, um, cholesterol tests, checks, we do, um, uh, all kind of biosigns checks, and speak to people, we, you know, they take care of TV, if it's in our community, it's monitored, that's all done for free. There's no cost to the people in the county for that to happen. The only, uh, they actually do have the capability now, and it talks about that in the grant, to bill insurance, which they do, um, so we do get reimbursed for some of that in our back scare. Um, but other than that, everything else is for free.
Garrett, comment? I'm trying to follow a meeting decorum here. Quick. So, this is the fund we were, you know, working through to try to free up for $10,000, and it wasn't a good fit.
Right.
And so, kind of like my, my thoughts on that last fund that's meant for public health, right? Not infrastructure necessarily, although it could be spent on a music, or a health center. I want to be really protective of those types of funds that are meant to serve the public with, that have no other option to serve them, right?
Right.
And it sounds like one of those funds, and again, we've known our HBAC needs replaced for 15 years.
Well, and it's in part of our program.
Right. And so we, we know that building expenses and maintenance are a part of our government, really Commissioner Comprehensive Financial Plan work, not, and I don't want, just me talking, I don't want to spend money that is designated for critical health needs, and really is our only fund for that purpose, to expand an inch into that known critical space. I don't want to spend that on needs that we've known for 10 years, and this is a new mold thing, I know, but the HBC and all that, you know, this is infrastructure, it's like replacing a vehicle after 100,000 miles, right? We see this coming, and we have other funds for it, always have. And so the other thing, second to that, is, second to protecting our critical funding for outstanding needs, is, we need to live within our budgets. Right? We own a building, we own vehicles, we need to fund those things out of our budgets, not out of other pools that we deplete, that are public benefit purely.
It can be.
And so, it's just my comments, and, and again, this is kind of an unusual space for us, this is an unusual conversation.
This is an unusual situation.
It is.
And it has hit us all month, and it's critical.
It is.
So it's like, okay, so, um, do we have the money and the money that we borrowed to take care of that, in the bond? I don't know, we haven't sat down with commissioners yet, but, um, we all know how long that takes, and, um, this needs to be replaced.
Understood, and I think the question is, like, the vehicle, it's not, do we use this particular fund, it's what funding can we use that's meant for that purpose?
Correct.
For planned expense, and I think it kicks right over the commissioners, right? That's their building.
Yeah.
Right? And so I'd go to them.
They will, and then, um, Dr. Conway is meeting with Kevin every single one.
Perfect.
So I, and they're gonna meet next Thursday, so we can discuss with them, and that will be before your meeting, so, and I don't know what their budget looks like, on what they're spending for this year, but if nothing else, maybe it could, I don't, that would be something for the attorney to answer, on whether or not, if we did spend this money out of this fund, could we get it reimbursed from the bond? Because we have it available now.
Just then we end up paying debt on it, or something, but, again, I think, you know, this is clearly a capital expense.
It is.
It's the commissioner's building and vehicle, all of which should be in a comprehensive capital plan, years in advance, planned, so I think you've gotta kick it to the commissioners. I mean, just my opinion. And, and really guard, as the Health Department.
We do.
Those funds, I know you do.
Yes.
This is unusual, but especially those funds, right?
Right. Yeah, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
Very thing. Anybody else?
How soon, how soon could bond funding be available for that?
I don't know.
I mean, we don't.
Well, no, that would be commissioners. So it just depends, they got the bond, I don't know if it's actually been deposited into the bank accounts, does anyone know?
Tim, you know the answer to that?
I'm not supposed to speak at these things, am I correct?
Yes.
Who gets money?
That we have the money.
Okay, well, we'll have Dr. Conway speak with the commissioners then, and then I will get back to you before your meeting, on what, on how they feel about that. Okay.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
All right, and then, um, the fifth thing that's on there is just, it's kind of a, it's a good thing. Um, we received a couple weeks ago, an invite from state Indiana, to actually put in for IDA, IDOH Division Emergency Preparedness, um, infection disease and epidemiology prevention for H5N1. I know, it's a, it's a law.
Burpli?
The board voted in for us to apply for the grant, so we applied for it last week, and this week we received $47,000. So we will be doing the paperwork on that, and putting that in a fund, uh, we will be receiving it through, we have to actually, on Monday, or Tuesday, we're meeting, and actually drawing up the plans for this. And what this ends up using, and I gave you, um, a, a questionnaire kind of thing that should on the turn, my, um, liaison that I work with at IDOH, on, um, what the grant is for, um, and so it's all in your letter, down towards the end, and one of the allowable, but not limited to, is influenza vaccines clinics. We do have a dairy farm here, and we do have a lot of people who have chickens in their backyards, or on the farms. Um, and it's not, it, those are the two main considerations that they do with the H5N1. We have already had one case that was someone that had worked over at, um, oh, what's the chicken farm over in Jacksonville?
Rose.
Rose Acres, had been exposed to H5N1. The nurses had to get with this person, had to do the research with this person or offer them Tamiflu. Like this is a big thing when it does happen. And Tamiflu is very costly. And so they pay for actual vaccine clinics, they actually pay for staffing and the cost of the monitoring, if there's additional, and to purchase Tamiflu. They will also pay for us to do educational, like if the, if the dairy farm here wanted to come and do an educational session with Cory and the nurses, we could do so. And they're getting proper training for all of this. And we will, this will also pay for vaccine if, well, not if, it's coming soon on the H5N1. So, so we have the money now and it's put in the bank. Well, we'd be getting it put in the bank. And so I'll be doing the paperwork to let you guys know where we located it and how about going to utilize it. So that's it.
And that's, obviously you said, you know, pretty emergency type.
Yes.
Response. And so, you know, council gets updated on grants. I think you just gave us the grant update on that grant.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Jerry, you got anything for us?
I sure do. I've got it. The presentation I did and I have it on my computer. I wasn't sure what was best and what you guys would prefer. If I can put it on the screen or, or copies, whatever you guys. Yeah.
Thank you.
My goodness.
You have an extra?
Yeah, sorry. I have to.
Yeah.
I'm going to go home right now. I think it will look to Laura's office and tell her that they have a presentation that we put on the screen. She would come up. Yeah. Thank you.
Jerry, you can go ahead and dive in.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can go ahead and start with, with this, yep. So what I have here, it's, it's more of a, I know that is multiple slides, but it's more of a big picture look at primarily property tax, the different types of property tax funds and, you know, how those rates work in correlation to NAV and how they grow. And then also income taxes. I mean, those are your two major sources of revenue. We dive into a few other potential funding sources, but some of the discussions that we had with the Finance Committee, which we met maybe three weeks ago, and then some discussions leading up to this was, we'll do this, kind of give you guys hopefully a more base knowledge, understanding of how these major sources of revenue work. We're in the process of updating your guys' financial plan, which will have all your budgeted funds. You'll see all the different revenues in there. So once that's updated, I'd be more than happy to come again, kind of go over more specifics of your guys' funds and those revenues and what they look like historically and then moving into the future. And I do have some financial plan examples kind of to show you what that'll look like. So the first slide here, property tax rate environment, just an understanding of the relationship between, you know, the tax rate, NAV and the property tax levy. So to generate the tax rate, it's, it's property tax levy divided by net assessed value times 100. The easiest way to really show it is within this table. I gave some different examples. So hypothetically, if your property tax levy grows 4%, but your net assessed value grows 6%, your tax rate's going to go down. So essentially anytime your NAV grows more than your levy, your tax rate goes down.
Question?
Yep.
Just thought we gotta go back to total basics. Who controls the tax levy?
Well, you.
I just wanted to say, what affects that up or down or anything?
Well, and I'll get into that more on a specifics, but the main ones are how much your levy's growing or it could be rate driven, which you guys do have, you know, your cumulative capital development fund. So that rate, which I'll get into it more, but it's the relationship between the levy and the AV and the rate. And sometimes your levy's going to grow by a certain amount or you might have a rate-driven fund where that rate stays the same. So it depends on NAV. So there's different relationships between there as far as how much your rate would increase or decrease. But I kind of have it broken down by each different type of property tax fund to show you that relationship.
Is our levy growth rate based on a, an assumption or an estimate of assessed value growth? Is that where that comes from?
When we get, when we get to that section, yeah, I'll explain because it depends on the different type of property tax fund, whether, how it grows specifically. So then if the levy and the, and assessed value grow the same, your rate's going to stay the same. If your levy grows more than your assessed value, then your rate increases.
Are you, are you presenting or are you connected? Is your computer on?
It, it's on. I just plugged it in here. I didn't know if I needed to do anything.
Do you have, is that HDMI or what is? Do you have just HDMI? I think you got.
It's not on four over here. Do you need to?
It was on four.
Okay. Jerry, you can probably go off your written route and maybe she could, can she check over your?
Yeah, if you want to.
I was just going to try. Susan, I just wanted Susan to listen.
So the next slide here is just showing your guys', just, just the county, just Brown County's rates as far as historically from 2021 through this current year. I know this is a lot of information on this slide.
Slide four.
Yes, slide four. And it's color coded there, so you have your maximum levy rates in orange. You can see that general reassessment, Cume Bridge, Health, they all fall within the maximum levy rates. And then you have your CCD, which is your cumulative capital development. It's actually rate driven and I'll explain the differences between these as we move forward. And then you have your debt rates, which used to have bond number two and then jail lease continuing. And then the other debt service started in, in 2022. And the chart on the left shows those rates broken down with the total rate at the top. The line through there is your net assessed value and you can see as that has continued to grow, grow, your overall tax rate has continued to decrease over those years, which essentially, big picture wise, which I'll get into more, your NAV is, you know, out paid, that growth is out facing what your levy is growing.
And to put a finer point on that, is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Um, yeah, I mean, your, your rates are going down, so essentially, you know, tax bills are less. Now, if you, if your NAV grows enough, you can do certain adjustments to your maximum levy. It's a three-year growth appeal. So essentially if it continued, that AV just continues to grow, grow, grow versus your maximum levy and that rate just keeps dwindling down, you guys didn't, didn't qualify, I checked for last year, you guys didn't qualify. We'll see this year. It potentially is an option, but there are some units out there where their AV just through the roof and your maximum levy can only grow so much, so your rate just keeps going down. So there are options available if you qualify to be able to make that adjustment to your maximum levy. So instead of your rate constantly going down, it just kind, it stays level. But I mean, it's showing relative to the maximum levy growth, how much your property tax is growing. It's showing good growth, you know, in the community. So you're still going to get your, your maximum levy amount, your rate's just going to decrease. But I mean, if your AV's growing like that, I would think that, you know, that's a good sign as far as economic development. I mean, potentially more people living in the county as far as income taxes.
Isn't, isn't a big part of it though, just increased assessments?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's been a lot of new construction too.
Housing, yeah.
So just to clarify in simplicity, why does the levy go down when the NAV goes up?
Well, the, I will discuss the max levy here on the next page. So, yeah, so hopefully that, that helps answer, answer your question.
Now that affects the whole more.
So the first property tax fund type falls within the maximum levy. I mean, in most cases, property taxes end up being your top, you know, revenue source. Actually, for you guys, income taxes is a little bit more, is, I mean, your tax rate is, is super low. But as far as this, I consider it a, and I have it on the next slide, a pie of money. So you have, you know, the four funds right now that fall within that. But that grows by the statewide maximum levy growth quotient, which is a six-year average of non-farm income. So whatever that is growing across, you know, statewide average, it doesn't matter if your county is growing a lot more than this county over here, it's statewide. So it's, it was 4% in 2025 and it's historically been right around four. It got up to five. It's been down, you know, in 2.7. I mean, so it fluctuates. So depending on what that is versus what your county's AV is growing is going to dictate what your rate does. So, and in your guys' case, it's been growing more than what, your AV's been growing more than what you're allowed to grow your maximum levy by. So that's just driving your tax rate.
Take care of changing your screen resolution.
Go right ahead. And just, I have for the council, I have been watching the budget bill and there was a hearing yesterday and they are, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, but they are considering a flatlining that maximum levy growth quotient, which is, we get every year in what, April, May, June, we get a growth assessment from the state that says, hey, county government, you can raise your fund, your revenues by X percent. As he's showing four here or five. It's been 5% last year, I think, 4% this year forward. And it's, and that gives us like 2, 3, 400,000 extra in our budget each year. That's all we get. And so what the legislature is saying is they want to flatline it. So zero percent growth in that maximum growth levy quotient, which is kind of where we get a little bit of additional revenues accounting for flatlining it. And I don't think that's going to change. It's just my opinion, but.
Yeah, I mean, unless there was something different there, yeah, they were showing, what, 0% in '26, then 1% in '27, 2% in '28.
Okay, so they did kind of bump it up.
So, yeah, it fluctuated. Now, I don't know what, what you, I mean, it could have changed. I mean, there, there's been, you know, all, all kinds of bills out there and some of them are so-called dead, but then you never know what they might pull from, you know, House, like House Bill 1402, that one was, you know, pretty rough. It's dead, but they could still potentially pull a piece from that and put it over to Senate Bill One. So there's all kinds of bills out there and it sounds like Senate Bill One is the one that's getting the most traction.
I would just say, and, and, you know, for the council, I think we should count on zero additional growth in that levy this year. I mean, do you, is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, and, and, and we should, I mean, mid to late April, I mean, we should kind of know what it's going to be. So, I mean, that's at least good for going into, you know, next year's budget to be able to. But yeah, I mean, you kind of have to go with the flow. I mean, it's kind of hard now with, I mean, it's dwindling down, but they're early on with all the different types of bills and I, I mean, we've worked with what AIM, which is for over cities and towns, like AIC is for, for counties and, and help them do certain studies and how, you know, different bills are, you know, going to affect, you know, the different units. But there's been all kinds of different bills out there. And there's, there's a few other ones that, you know, could affect, not to the level of like Senate Bill One. I mean, that's going to be the major one, but yeah, just kind of have to go with the flow, so to speak, and, and make, you know, changes on the fly. But luckily, we should know prior to budget season so we can, we can make adjustments within your maximum.
I did, not to get you off track on legislation, but I did double check on our, the Brown County's assessment of our loss in that Senate bill. Remember, we were at first, we were 1.2 million, first year, 1.4, then 1.7 million loss this third year. I wanted to, a part of that number is our, is a senior property tax cap that would generate a loss for the county's budget, a senior property tax cut. And as you know, we're the most senior county in the state. So I double checked that number and wanted to make sure it was accurate, not an assessment because we could be disproportionately harmed by it. It was just, oh, on average, here's what your tax, well, luckily it, it does account for our, or apparently that number in that fiscal on Senate Bill One accounts for our senior population and our current circuit breaker, senior losses, whatever you call that. And so we're, we're actually protected there, which is a relief because it could have been a lot worse for us. So, but anyway, I want to get you back on track. Didn't mean to get you off.
No, you know, you're fine. I have a little bit of information on circuit breaker. I think it's, even though it's, other than like you mentioned, the over 65 circuit breaker credit, that's the only credit that you guys have as far as property tax revenue loss. You guys have no circuit breaker within 1%, 2%, 3%. I have some slides in here because I think it's, it's good just to understand how that works, even though it's not, you know, something that you guys really have to deal with currently other than, you know, the over 65. So that's how, that's how this max levy grows. So the next chart here, I just have a breakdown of, you know, 2024's maximum levy versus 2025's. You see the total funding, you know, down below. This is normal, you know, your general fund, it's your main operating fund, it's the big blue section there. I mean, it's just under, you know, 3, 3 million. And then you have a little bit going to some of these, you know, other funds as far as reassessment, Cume Bridge and Health. I'll get into it a little bit in the future, but Cume Bridge, it falls within your maximum levy because you guys have a cumulative capital development fund. Once you have that established, it ends up pushing these other Cume funds into your maximum levy. So that's why you see that in there. But you can see the growth from 24 to 25, you know, not substantial, but it, you know, it is, it is your guys' growth for your, your maximum levy funds. And then as I mentioned earlier, anytime you, like if you increase, you know, general fund, it takes away from a different fund. Or if you increase, you know, like one of those other ones, then it's less for the general. So it is a, it is a big puzzle with you guys' overall revenue structure and your budgeting needs.
Jerry, real quick. So, you know, and we got varying levels of experience here from brand new to six, eight years on council. And so from 24 maximum levy to 25 maximum levy, it looks like we've grown the budget 138,000 in that space, or not the budget, but the, the tax paid by residents through their property taxes. I'm trying to work this out as we talk about it. Help us define what this pool is and where it's coming from. Is it property tax levy?
It, it is property taxes. It's what, yes, it's what property tax, or taxpayers are, are paying. And it is Brown County's portion because they will say they live in, you know, Nashville. You've got the total taxing district within there. So, you know, it might be the Nashville, you know, Brown County, you know, school, township, all of those make up the total taxing district rate that they will pay, but this is the portion that you guys receive from that. But yes, this is, this is property taxes.
So I'm working on the percentage increase of property taxes for the county year over year, here as we're sitting here. And it's, is it 1%, 1.03%? And it's is it one percent, one point zero three percent increase?
It, yes, it's not going to, it may not be exactly, say, what the max levy growth is. There's other adjustments within that calculation, which when we have your guys' financial plan and we can go over that and I can show you your historical year over year maximum levy and how that grows. But you guys have other adjustments in there as well, depending on your there's adjustments for, you know, the mental disabilities, whatever that line item is within your guys' budget, you get an adjustment to that. It shows it on your seventeen eighty two notice, but it's going to be roughly, you know, the close to the max levy growth that you actually receive. Another thing is you may, depending on, you guys are pretty much at your maximum levy, so you get a maximum levy. If you wanted to, you could take less of that max levy. I mean, we would never recommend that, but depending on you're under the max, which say your maximum levy, it may actually be for twenty twenty five, three thousand nine hundred and fifty. You might be under your max by like ten grand or something. Sometime, most, most years, you're going to be under your max a little bit just because of rounding with the tax rate and the decimals. But that could change the exact, like, if you do the percent increase over twenty four to twenty five, it may not be exactly four percent because there's other little adjustments and stuff in there. But for the most part, that's like it's going to grow by what the maximum levy growth quotient is.
Okay, some of the questions I'm going to ask, and what we're trying to do here ultimately is to lay a foundation that can carry through. When somebody new comes in, say, two years, four years from now, they can go to some document or whatever. And there's a, because they don't know what government finances at all. They have no idea what the term levy may be. So some of that, don't make any assumptions, just go back to the very elemental basics and try and lay a foundation that says, okay, this is where the government, how the government chooses to operate, who controls all that stuff. That would be helpful for us so we can begin to have a carryover document that gets people. Because we we asked the S P O A and such about that, they they don't do anything for us in that respect.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is one of your main revenue sources, which is property taxes that fall under the maximum levy.
Okay, and what what who defines the maximum levy? Tell us that all down to the basic right there. Where does that come from?
Property tax rate.
It's pro, it's, it's, yes.
Somebody says we can levy this against the property taxes, right?
Yes, and that that money, which your guys is going into twenty twenty five, is three point nine million. You can allocate that between the funds listed here. And then that growth is limited based off of the maximum levy growth quotient.
All right, let me, Gary, let me, let me go back to even a more basic. We set the budget each year for the county.
Yes.
And in that budget process, when we give the state a number, they give us a levy back, right? So they're reacting to our budget request.
We give them the assessed value.
Right, no, no, they get the assessed value. Our budget, when we do our budget, we give it to the state and they say, okay, here's your budget, here's your net assessed value. Therefore, here is your property tax levy rate. Correct, fill me in here, Jerry.
I mean, you, you.
I got a question, I think it may help answer.
Okay.
Okay, what, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, because we've got the assessor and the assessor's office determines the value of all the property. That's all added up, that goes to the state. The state says, okay, this is the the combined pool of your assessed value for the county that is your levy. So the state tells us what our levy is based on our assessed value that comes from the assessor's office, is that?
No, they they will, your N A V, your assessed value, that'll get certified and and that is, you know, what it is whenever you, you know, go through the budget process and all that.
Who certifies that?
So, I mean, it it's first through, you know, the county assessor's office. I mean, so that that number, I mean, it ends up, you guys don't have control over that. It is what it what it is. When you go through the budget process.
The question is, does our budget define the property tax levy? I think the answer is yes.
When you go through, when you go through the budget process and you guys are, you know, approving, you know, all the budget, the expenditure side, all that budget. You are also approving the levy side and you, you know, put it, the levy amounts, how much you want in general, reassessment, blah, blah, blah. But you're going to be limited to what the the growth is, this calculation. So you you guys, as a council, you could adopt a ten million dollars total in levy. Doesn't mean it's going to get approved. The D L G F is going to review it through the seventeen eighty two notice process and they're going to cut you back to the maximum amount that you're allowed to have. So this is, I mean, it's just a running formula based off of how much you have and how much it grows each year. And what you guys do on your side, now, through like, through building the plan out and based off your guys' budgets, you know, we're going to show you summaries. We're going to show you, based off of projected revenue, which ones have surpluses, deficits, you know. So you guys can make that decision of, you know, making cuts or moving around or shifting around levy between these four funds. But you are limited to this amount. And you can adopt it. And and a common practice in what we do is just to make sure, I mean, it's a it's a safeguard. So you guys might end up adopting maybe ten percent over what these numbers are for each fund. And then the D L G F will cut that back. It's just a safeguard to make sure you don't miss anything through the budget budget budgeting process. So you kind of want to go a little bit higher and let the D L G F cut it back to what you're you're allowed to have.
Jerry, I think some of us are following you, some of us are probably struggling. Just to sum that up, and I think we can move on, but we do, we know what our maximum levy is beginning of the year based on the maximum levy growth quotient. If there is one, we know what that number is before we do our budget essentially.
Yes.
And then we do our budget to fit within that levy. And we go a little bit over just to make sure we capture everything we need, but we need more than we can get anyway. And then the seventeen eighty two notice, Patrick, is just a process, like, means nothing to anybody but us. Seventeen eighty, it's just a a portion of the process where the counties or the state looks at our budget, looks at our assessed value and our levy and says, yes or no? And usually it's yes, and if it's no, they cut us back to be within our levy.
It's not just, it's not just yes or no. It's, yes, but this, you're over by this.
And this year, we, this year, we had to adjust something between. So it's basically, we do the budget, we know the max we can go to, and then the state compares yes or no. But we are setting these rates with our budgeting process. And as an example, we could, we could set a our budget at a million dollars. And what would happen to our levy if we set it at a million dollars?
Well, so you're referring to setting your property tax levy at a at a million? I mean, it's, as long as it's it's, you know, funded, I mean, it's going to drop your rate substantially.
Yeah, because we define the levy.
I mean, and then you would be under, you would be under the max for that year. But that growth is still there, you just didn't levy it. And then the following year, you could capture it back if you wanted and go. But obviously, with your guys' like, all your needs, I mean, I know that just illustration purposes.
It's just illustration, but I mean, my point is, our budget sets the property tax rate, period, end of story. I mean, and then, yes, there are other factors, but we drive that rate, so our decisions are important.
Within the D L G F.
Within the property tax, we're talking about property taxes right now, so there's a whole bunch of other variations to this, but.
Yeah, and it during the seventeen 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 eighty two notice process, I mean, most of the time, as long as you have enough cash on hand, I mean, the D L G F is going to, you know, approve it. I mean, because they they will approve your budget based off of not just your projected revenue for that that year, but they will spend up, spend all of your cash, which obviously, we would never recommend that. I mean, we want you guys to have a budget or a balanced budget, if not growing cash, to try to hit, you know, your guys' cash reserve policies that I know that you guys have been, you know, discussing. But yeah, as far as the max levy, did that answer, like, I know it's, it gets complex.
Technically, for the for the newcomer, I'd like them to say, okay, some guy comes up to your property and he assesses your value, all right? How does that affect then what we're going to get out of this? It's a very simple linear process to say, okay, and who who has their hands in the pocket to say how that's controlled? That's the basic curious thing, because these things are not common to the average person. And we get average people up here who end up serving on the council. That's my curiosity, an educational process.
Down to the minute level of tax bill?
I mean, it's just like, how does somebody come in here, we give them, we gave them a.
Because I can, I can, I can put together, obviously not right now, like, a, this taxpayer lives in this taxing district. These are the different rates based off of different units. This is the potential circuit breaker, which for you guys, you don't have it unless they're over sixty five right now. So base, it it's just proportionately based off of their rate. Like, if your guys' rate is fifty percent of the total taxing district rate, when they go to pay taxes, I mean, fifty percent is going to be going.
Gary, I think to your point, I mean, and I think we probably need to, you got several slides here. But the assessment is, yes, we have a county assessor, but that county assessor follows the state mandated assessment rules. And so we're kind of, and so they show up, they hire someone to show up, assess your value, that has nothing to do with us. It's the state's decision on how properties are assessed, our assessor carries that out. And that affects our levy rate based on budget. But I think I think we need to probably move on, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if you want other edu, I thought this was more revenue based, not this flow maybe structure. But we can do whatever, you know, you want in in the future. If you want it to that level of of a taxpayer, as far as how the flow of their money goes whenever they pay their taxes.
Totally the flow, but just how it comes in here, so someone can make correlation between where they live and what we're doing up here. I mean, because once they get up here, they have to make that correlation and know how it's going to affect things.
I think that would be beneficial going for it, because one thing we'd like to have, what we'd like to have is basically a county council library where, you know, the newly, the most newly elected official could come in with the questions of, well, who sets our levy? What is our, what is our levy? What does our levy mean? What is the reassessment fund for where we can say, well, here's, here's the dot. This explains all of our taxes, how they're, how we, how we come to those rates, what they're affected by them.
Jerry, Darren, in my car, I can go out and get it for you, is the brown for the Indiana County Council handbook. And it's like a forty seven page, I don't know how many pages, but it describes blue, describes all of these things. We don't have to pay somebody to reinvent it, it's already there. It describes all of this real simply, and so I, we could probably look at that too as as.
Sorry, it's just my. The next slide here, slide seven, I wanted to show you specifically the rates for your maximum levy, those funds. And that correlation between how much the property tax levy, that pie is growing versus your net assessed value. So the stacked bar graph here is the different funds and those rates, the total rate at the very top. The line is your N A V growth, but then down below, I wanted to show you the difference for each year, what the maximum levy growth was for that particular year versus the net assessed value growth for that particular year. So you can see, you know, going into twenty twenty two, that the maximum levy, that pie of of property taxes grew four point three percent, but your N A V grew nine point three eight percent, which is why the rate decreased from, you know, roughly twenty three cents to twenty two cents.
Jerry, on that maximum levy growth, you're looking at the spreadsheet at the very bottom. Maximum levy growth, should that have quotient after it? No, you're confused there.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you could put, yes, it's maximum levy growth. It's the quotient, I was just saying that that maximum levy, that's how much that grew.
But is that what the state said?
That, yeah, that's, so that, this shows a little bit more historical numbers as far as how much that's that's grown. So you can see four point two, four point three, five, four, and then four.
So it is the M L G Q.
Yep, and then the the line right below it, I wanted to show you how much the county's net assessed value has grown relative to that. And that is contributing to your guys' rate decreasing for this, for their maximum levy rate.
We have had, I mean, I'm trying to explain some of this away. I've heard a lot about assessed values increasing and and I've seen that. And I think a lot of it's the demand and purchase pricing driving that. But it's also a lot of new homes, which in through COVID, because we have, you know, really good fiber, we saw a a huge increase in building permits, people wanting to move here, building homes here. So we've seen some residential growth. And I think typically, when you see an in a net assessed value of property grow in a community, kind of filtering out the assessment issue, what it means is you've got more demand for services. And this is more of a question, a statement, I mean, but if you see more value and more buildings, doesn't that mean the government has kind of more demand on services?
I mean, yes, I I would think there'd be a correlation to that as far as the amount of services that you need to maintain the net assessed value growth. I mean, you might have more homes being built or you might have more businesses coming in, more, you know, commercial businesses being built, which is why I feel there is that adjustment to the maximum levy outside of just this growth you see here, where if your guys' assessed value is over a three year period, there's a calculation. But if it hits, if it qualifies, that you can actually get a little bit more property taxes, which makes sense because you are servicing even more net assessed value.
And if we, you might even run the difference between farm and commercial, those two issues, percentage rates, two percent, three percent?
Yep, and I have a slide later on that breaks down the differences there on the on the on the circuit breaker side.
Also, I I'm trying to compare that bottom, on page seven, bottom spreadsheet there, already there, that maximum levy growth. If you look at twenty five and twenty four, it says four percent. And this is the M L G P is the maximum levy growth quotient. You slip back to the previous slide, previous page, page six. And I, I mean, and help me do the math here, but I I calculated like the one point oh three percent increase from twenty four to twenty five. What's the difference? It's showing one percent increase and this is showing four, so what's the difference?
There can be different adjustments in there based off of, so for example, your guys' adjustment, and I don't have the seven, I don't think I have the seventeen eighty two notice with me, but you guys get other adjustments. And that didn't grow at all, but I kept those in there. And it's like a hundred and maybe twenty thousand, so there's no growth on that from one year to the other. So that's already going to decrease that overall growth, because that's just a direct adjustment to your maximum levy for, you know, mental health disabilities and things like that.
And just to catch your mind, I did the math on page six and just the three point eight. It doesn't call it out.
Good question to say why that correlates to this, right?
So it's roughly.
So you say other things affected even though it's four percent, it's not going to show four percent directly in our budget?
Correct, it might not, because you're under the max that I was mentioning, which it can be very confusing, I guess, to understand whenever you don't see it all in front of you. That number can change as well, because I believe from twenty four to twenty five, one year it was around two grand and then the following year it was around like ten grand. So there's other things in there, so it might not be exactly what that, you know, percent.
But is it fair to say that the the page on page six, Brown County maximum levy, shows that county council increased the property tax rate by one percent?
So if you look at the the bottom, the bottom line of page seven, go down to any, the N A V line, the blue line, where it gives you your, in twenty twenty one, it was one point four four million.
Yep.
Twenty twenty two is one point five seven million. Twenty twenty three was one point seven nine five.
Assessed value, yeah.
That's the assessed value, that's what grew.
So that grew for sure, I see that, yeah.
That is the growth. That, the N A V line there is a portion of the pie chart on page six. So overall, it grew by one point. But if you break down this part, the assessed value, that's what grew by four percent.
Now, keep keep assessed value outside of this. That's that's N A V over here. So you have your property tax levy over here and these funds fall within your maximum levy. So this property tax levy will grow by the maximum levy growth quotient. So that's going to grow by a certain percent. Your N A V is separate. It's going to grow by, you know, your growth in your county. And then the only thing that that affects then is like overall what your tax rate's going to do. So if your property tax max levy grows four percent and your N A V grows ten percent, your rate's going to go down. So N A V separate from this max levy right now. This calculation.
The question that was asked was, what what number actually grew at four percent?
The the maximum levy. The reason that this isn't exact is because there's a few other things in here. This, the, it, this growth from the three point eight to the three point nine is three point six three percent. So it's just under that. You have other adjustments in here. You have other adjustments in here that stayed the same from one year to, to the next, so there was no growth in that. I have that in here, and, so there's no growth for those, that's gonna drive it down a little bit, depending on what your overall under the max is. So, you can get this maximum amount, but sometimes it ends up being a little bit less. There was a difference there is also, so that changes, that's why this isn't exactly four percent, but it's very, very, very close.
Is that also affected by other taxing districts, like the subway, the library?
Your guys' is max levy, no.
Well, when you said it was three-point-eight to three-point-nine, it's three-point-six percent, Scott gets one-point-whatever-six percent.
I will correlate that, I'm not.
I, I calculated.
One-point-oh-three, I just did one divided by the other, Kim.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollar increase, and that's, that's what, and so.
Seems like it'd be one-point-seven percent.
Yeah, it's one-point-oh-three or something.
Yeah, so three-point-six, three percent.
Whatever it is, it's, it's pretty low, a hundred thousand, a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand year-to-year, it's a very small percentage growth, right? And so, anyway, I, I think we need to come back to that later, because we're clearly not quite there with it yet, but.
I mean, big, I mean, big picture, I mean, that, it's gonna grow by the maximum levy growth quotient.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys have a, a mental health line you get an adjustment for, and you have developmental disabilities that you get an adjustment for, which is roughly a hundred-and-thirty grand. That was the same in twenty-four as it was in twenty-five, no growth on that, so that's gonna bring that four percent down a little bit, you know? So, it might not be exact, but, but it's gonna be, you know, pretty close.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, this one, I just wanted to show that, why your tax rate's going down for these. It's because your net assessed value is growing more than your maximum levy growth.
So, in other words, it's spread out among more people with different values, and the tax rate is spread out more, so it's lower, and people do not understand that, and so anyway, let's keep moving, I think we'll get through that today.
And then, uh, the next would be rate-driven funds, which the only one that you guys have is, well, I mean, you, you guys have two of them. The one that's technically just rate-driven is your CCD fund, which is your cumulative capital development fund. So, it's its own fund, it has its own rate, generates its own levy, you guys can use that for capital-related, you know, items. The max rate for that, so for these, it's, it's different than the maximum levy. These, there are caps, max amount of tax rates that you can have on these, and it can fluctuate. So, for example, your CCD fund, the max rate is point-zero-three-three-three, you guys are at that max.
Who sets that?
Well, it is, it is, the state, it's, as far as the maximum amount that you can have, I mean, that's state law on that side. Now, through the process, the county commissioners would have, and you guys did it, I think, a couple of years ago, I'll have it on, I think, the next slide, you guys reestablished that to the max that you could do. So, they, the commissioners will go through the process of, you know, reestablishing that rate, but then the council still has to approve that through, you know, the budgeting process, whenever you guys adopt the budget and rates and things like that. So, it's kind of a combination, but it starts with the commissioners as far as the local level and getting the process done. Now, and this next slide will show this in a better way to understand it.
Jerry, sorry to go back to that, CCD fund, I mean, it's the cum- cumulative capital development fund. And I'm assuming it goes through the commissioners, because the capital needs of the county are in the commissioner's wheelhouse. And so, if it starts there, all the capital expenses have to go through them, is that right?
Yeah, and I, I guess whenever I was referring to the rate process was more so like they do have to establish the rate and reestablish it if, you know, you would go, go higher, but yeah, you're correct. So, there was a, there was a change, if we look at the next slide, slide nine, and how this.
Jerry, sorry I slowed you down here, I don't wanna skip over the Kim Park and Kim Courthouse funds you showed in there. We don't ever talk about those, can you help us understand that?
Yeah, you.
You don't, because we don't have a.
Now, you, you can, you can establish a, a rate for either one of those, for, you know, cap- capital nature for park, or like for a courthouse or anything like that, like construction or capital and so on and so forth. But one thing to, to keep in mind, and this even goes with your Qum Bridge Fund, where the max rate is ten cents, but you guys are a little over two cents, these other ones down below here, if you guys end up establishing a rate for that, it actually is pushed into your maximum levy, so it would actually decrease some of your other ones, your other funds. So, that's something to, to keep in mind. So, even hypothetically, Qum Bridge, you're like, hey, we wanna go from, you know, a little over two cents to the full ten cents. Well, that's gonna eat into that pie of money on that maximum levy page and take away from some of your other ones.
It doesn't grow our pie, it only, it only takes another slice out of another pie.
Correct, so CCD is the one that's outside of it, that is truly, you know, simply rate-driven. So, that's outside of, which you guys have that maxed out, that's the maximum amount you're allowed to have. But yeah, there are other Qum funds for specific reasons where you could, you know, get a rate for, but keep in mind, that's not really an additional new rate and new revenue, it's really taken from over here, putting it here, so just keep that in mind for those.
Yeah, it's something we, the council's been working on, they've asked me to look at revenue sources, and we've looked at, you know, a gate fee tax at the state park and an innkeeper's tax to help us offset, you know, priority stuff, which is public safety, but also park expenses, courthouse expenses, fairground expenses, capital and otherwise, roads, et cetera, would be kind of outside of that, I would think, but, and, and so if I'm understanding you right, the Qum Park and the Qum Courthouse levy, which would be a tax on residents, this is a tax on residents that the council wanted to pass those to fund ball field lights, to fund, you know, courthouse grounds improvements by your village, it would actually take away from roads?
No.
Well, let me finish, it would take away from our ability to fund roads through the Qum Bridge Fund, which is currently set at point-oh-two, with a maximum of point-one, there's eight cents there. So, if we passed eight cents on Qum Park and Qum Court House, we would be eliminating the opportunity to fund bridges, if I'm reading this right.
Well, I would look at it more.
You would take away from your general fund.
Yeah, that.
Take away from the general fund.
Yeah, you look at that, you know, that max levy pie, if you do a rate, like this is the max, so for example, twenty-twenty-five, we'll just round it to four million.
Page six?
Yeah, well, I'll just round the twenty-twenty-five max levy to four million. If you establish a Qum Park rate, that four million's staying the same, but that now Qum Park is in here, so it has to come away from one of these, which is typically your general fund.
Let me see that, you're gonna, you're gonna add a fifth color, it's gonna cut that.
Yep, yep.
So, it's not increasing this, it's just taking away from this.
Thank you for that, and, and so in other words, I think passing that fund to take care of our courthouse or fund parks, which we can't otherwise fund, would literally take away from public safety funds, which is the majority of our general fund balance.
Yeah.
And so, a- as a council, what I, as I'm going through revenues, like you've asked me to do, and identifying sources of funding, I mean, the least attractive source to me is the tax funds, right, in terms of revenues, new revenues. And so, just keep in mind, our, our options here are, if we wanna keep funding the, the buildings and the parks and the trails and the historic stuff that are tourism-related, you got two choices. You can dip into the general fund and pass a courthouse tax and a park tax to try to keep ball field lights up and going, or you can try to access innkeeper's tax for tourism-related funds or, or gate fee tax that don't eat into our public safety funds and kind of, and so, just to paint that picture for you, it looks like we got two options here, and, and so if I'm understanding that right, Jerry, thank you.
Yep, sorry, yep, no, you're fine. I know it's a, it's a lot, and, I mean, there's a lot of questions that stem from all this stuff, so. The next slide there, slide nine, try to explain this the best that I can as far as the change and how the, the fluctuation in the rates are for rate-driven funds. On the left here, the CCD rate versus net assessed value. So, you can see that in the, the rate for CCD is in the red, so from twenty-one to twenty-two, it actually decreased, the rate did, as NAV increased. So, during these years, and it was in twenty-twenty-three, which happened to be the year that you guys reestablished, which actually timing was, was very good there, prior to twenty-three, there was a calculation for how much, like what your max property tax levy could be for your CCD fund. And usually, it didn't fluctuate that much, but that was the max that it could be. So, the simplest terms for illustration purposes, your property tax levy could not change for your CCD fund unless you reestablished. So, that levy's staying the same. So, if your NAV is increasing, especially drastically, it's gonna drive your rate down to keep that same levy. So, that's what happened in twenty-one to twenty-two, and probably in prior years too, where your rate would just continually decrease because your levy's not changing, but your NAV is growing drastically, and so.
Which spreads it over more people.
Correct.
Which lowers the rate, it's not that we're collecting less, in fact, we're collecting more, it appears.
Roughly, roughly the same, for this purpose, I know you guys did collect a little bit more from twenty-one to twenty-two, but for illustration purposes, that's how it worked prior with, with the rate. Then in twenty-twenty-three, they changed it, and the rate no longer fluctuated with AV and things like that. So, once you established a rate, that's what the rates, it stayed that way. So, in twenty-twenty-three, you guys had reestablished your rate to point-zero-three-three-three, which was the max. So, now, you can see in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, that rate stays the same, even though net assessed value's increasing. If we jump over to the graph on the right side, and we start in twenty-twenty-three, whenever the rate is, I mean, it's at the max amount, it's not fluctuating. So, now, that growth in levy is gonna be the exact same as whatever your growth in your NAV is. So, if your NAV from twenty-three to twenty-four grew five percent, your levy's gonna grow five percent, because your rate does not change. So, you, unless there is a legislative change, like in how this process works with the rate, you guys, I mean, you're at your maximum rate, I mean, I mean, it just stays there, so your property tax levy is going to grow with the amount of whatever your NAV grows.
So, the levy grows because the rate is the same on a bigger basis?
Correct, yep.
You always say that kind of stuff.
Yep.
And when you say, and I think for everybody's purposes, the green lines, the CCD levy, that's basically the revenue.
Yes, that is property tax levy.
Property tax revenue.
Revenue.
And it's outside of the levy, right?
Outside of the maximum levy, yes.
Which is why it can grow at a five-and-a-half percent.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's gonna grow, that levy, that property tax levy is gonna grow by whatever your net assessed value grows.
By the way, does Susan have a copy of this by chance?
I don't think so, but I mean, I can always.
I, Jerry can email it to me later, I have been paying attention, so, and Laura wasn't able to, to send it to me right now, so.
Okay. So, yeah, that, that's kind of the difference as far as the rate-driven versus the maximum levy and how that, that, the total property tax levy grows for each one of those. Now, the next one, your next type of property tax funds is your, your debt service funds, which you guys have two different ones, you have the jail lease, and I think it's just bond number, or just a debt service fund. So, you guys do have two, two different funds that fall within debt service, property tax funds. So, now, the rate for this, we call it needs-driven.
So, when you say too, let's define those, jail lease, we've had that for what, twenty years or so?
I'm not sure how long that you guys, when that first, I'll be able to let, once we have the financial plan complete.
So, that's one, it's a long-term lease, which we take a debt, it's like a mortgage, it's kind of how it's up, we have a first thinking.
And then, I'm not.
The other one, the other one you're referring to is?
Our general obligation bond.
General obligation bond.
Yeah, it's pretty generic.
And then the other one's probably rolling off, is my guess, the last, the P O B bonds.
Yeah, you guys had one that, the last rate for it was in twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
And then still had jail lease at that point, and then in twenty-twenty-two, when that one, bond number two rolled off, you guys did a new one. So, you still have two different debt funds currently. And as far as the amount that you can levy for one of these debt funds, the, the DLGF is, they're gonna let you levy enough to make your, your payments, obviously, because it's, it's, you're obligated to make those payments. And then, they will let you have a maximum amount of cash reserve after making those payments. And I believe one of your funds falls into one of these scenarios and one the other one. So, depending on the timing of, of the original debt dictates the amount of cash reserve that you can have in there. So, if it is, if it was a debt that, so the one that you guys just did in twenty-three, I mean, the reserve there that you're gonna allow to have carrying over year-over-year is only fifteen percent cash reserve, so fifteen percent of whatever your payments pretty are, pretty much are the, the following year.
So, you've done it right, well, the levy is such, just so you guys know, it's like, we just had a, retired a three-million-dollar bond, got to a four-million-dollar bond, part of the issue is, is we don't wanna, if we didn't take the bond out, the taxes, tax rate would go down, because this is above and beyond everything else. So, you wanna sort of keep it up, otherwise people, you go down, unless we got a big rainy day, family wouldn't know what to do, that we might replace that, but. Fact is, is if you lower the taxes, then you have to raise it, two, three years later, they're gonna complain, that's somewhat the philosophy that goes with that. So, we went from a three-million-dollar bond down to a four-million-dollar bond, just to keep that tax rate in play. And that's, all other things, it's the same tax rate.
Yeah, from our experience, most of the units that we work with, they prefer to do that for that very reason that you mentioned, as far as like, just kind of keeping that overall rate the same, instead of, oh, come down here and then, you know, then you go to do issue again, and, you know, those taxes, tax rates go, you know, back up.
And your fifteen percent, what's that based upon, say, if you had a three-million-dollar bond?
Well, it has to do with the, the payments for that next year, so you usually, you know, have two payments, one in June and one in December, and hypothetically, say, those two payments combined, which would, you know, cover the principal and interest, say it's a million dollars for that following year, based off of the DLGF's, you know, calculation, they will let you levy enough taxes and generate that revenue to pay that million dollars, and then you'd be left with fifteen percent, so like a hundred-and-fifty grand, is how much cash balance that you could maintain carrying, you know, forward. So, there's, there is a maximum amount of like what the tax levy can be based off of.
What do you do with fifteen percent?
Well, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna keep that there, and then, you know, the following year, you're gonna continue to make these debt payments over the course of the life of the, of the, of the debt. And I can help with.
Just to service the debt?
Yeah, and, and then, once that last payment, that last year goes into effect, and you're gonna make the last payment, the DLGF will factor in the cash that you had on hand, and they will lower your property tax levy, because they, they will then only allow you to have enough to, based off cash on hand, property tax levy, to make the payment so that your ending cash is zero. So, they'll make adjustments and stuff like that, but that's just the amount, the, now, we don't have, all of our clients, or units that we work with, they don't all elect to have, you know, fifteen percent, you know, they might have ten percent, you could still lower the taxes just a little bit if you want. That's just the maximum amount of like the reserve that you could have in there. But this is strictly the debt service payment fund, so it is, it is the fund that will have a tax rate, it generates property tax levy, and you make, you know, the payment based off the amortization schedule, the, the principal and interest payment. You have a separate fund, which is your capital projects, you know, fund, bond proceeds fund, so when you. So when you go to, you know, issue the debt and you get those bond proceeds and you want to spend them on all these different, you know, capital, whatever you issued the bond for, that's a separate fund, okay? This is, this is the fund to make the, the principal and interest payments that, you know, has a proper tax levy. And then separately, you'll get, you know, the bond proceeds in a different fund and you will track, you know, the spending based off of, you know, whatever you issued the bond for.
Sounds like, yeah, sounds like we've got the money according to what Tim was just saying and, and the account. I know when we first passed this, it was important that we immediately put the money to work and to put the time value of money in our favor. Is that still the case? And, and should we be getting this money on the ground? Are we, the other thing I'm trying to remember, if we said, until we draw the funds, does the interest start to kick in? I, I think the answer-
We, that's what we said.
Yeah, that's what we, I think we set it up, but tried to anyway.
Getting a little out of my expertise.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not a registered municipal advisor. But I, I know, I believe there's timeframes where you're, you're supposed to spend it. Um, and then as far as interest, you got to be careful there too. Because if you're generating more interest, then like there's arbitrage.
Susan, you've got all this-
Thank you, Susan, because I don't want to get too much into it.
I think we do need an update on, on, from, from your folks, whoever is, but Susan, you, you're, you're in this as well. What were your thoughts?
Yeah, so Jerry's right. I mean, you can earn interest on the bond proceeds that are sitting in your funds. However, you cannot earn more interest than the interest that you're paying for the debt. Uh, you're, you're going to violate your arbitrage agreements that are in your trust and denture. So, so that has to be just monitored carefully. And then, so the thought of using the money right away, um, or saving it and, and earning interest on it, I mean, like that, that's a, that's a process of making sure that we're not violating those arbitrage rules in your trust and denture for your bond. And so, you know, during the bond process, that's why you kind of establish the timeline of when you wanted to do projects, because that gave you the estimated time of when you would be using that money, what year you would be using that money in, um, which then goes into your calculation of your arbitrage.
Great, so we're not saving any money by sitting on it and we've got projects we need to fund, that's why we passed it, so. But yeah, Jerry, I think we could use an update as council, President Henry's on that, and maybe our next meeting.
Yeah, to see, to be a good example, just because that's going to be a continuing process, most likely those bonds. So say, okay, this is how the bond comes in, this is how it's worked through the system. That's a good cor- correlation there. And my question would be is like, okay, let's say you start in a small interest environment, but all of a sudden the interest rates federally go up, you still can't appropriate that, you still have to stay small. Like our twenty-three, or our earlier three million dollar bond was a very, very low interest rate. But the interest rates went up during that period of time, but we couldn't take advantage of that, is that true?
That's a tough question.
In terms of, of interest generation income, interest income, I mean-
Well, let's say you take the bond, you take the bond, well, we can go ahead, just say that, but you explain it.
Right, so in terms of interest income, if you had money sitting there and it was invested, then, then yes, you may get some of that interest income. Again, you have to make sure that you're not violating your arbitrage. So, um, yeah, it may be difficult to take advantage of the interest income, but you also were not paying more for that debt when those rates went up because you locked in your debt at that lower rate. You locked in your bond at that lower rate.
Right, so what I was saying is that, that, that my understanding, that was less than one percent rate on that bond. So if interest rates two years later go up to four percent and you're sitting in a bank account and we started gaining money, we can't do that?
You can't, and we're, you can't, the arbitrage, you can't, basically, we're not going to make money by sitting on it. You have to lose money essentially, or break even.
Even though the market all changes and all that stuff, you cannot take appropriate advantage of it.
I think we got to fix rate, right?
Right.
Fix, gotcha. So yeah, good question.
Yeah.
All right.
Jerry, are we tripping you up and up here?
No, you're fine.
Should we speak?
Good, hey, ask questions. I know it's a lot.
Let's leave the questions, yeah.
There's a lot, and it may be even more questions going into this next section. So the next one, uh, local income tax. Sorry, uh, slide eleven. So typically, second largest funding source, for you guys, it's actually your, your number one. It's more than property taxes like I, I mentioned previously.
Now, just to position that, we have been told that our property tax is pretty low, high up there in terms of max available.
Yeah.
Property tax is low, or just, is this correct? And how does that play into this?
Yeah, I mean, you guys on the one end with property tax rates are very, very, very low. And then, um, on the income tax side, you can see, I know that, I mean, it's small here. This graph with all these blue dots and then the orange dot is you guys, um, you guys are in the upper, you know, fifth or, you know, maybe even more than that. So you guys, yes, to your point, you're, you're higher on the income tax rate side, but much, much lower on the property tax rate.
Would that value trade off on one or the other, one over the other, why did you do that?
Well, I mean, you could look at it as far as- As, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, the first thing that popped in my head would be, as a income tax, you're, you're paying it one time. I mean, it's, as living in, in the county. But on the property tax side, this isn't the case for everybody, but you could own multiple parcels and properties, so you're paying it, you know, multiple times versus, you know, the one rate on the income tax side.
I think the argument for having a higher income tax rate versus having a higher property tax rate is the people who do not own property but rent property and live in the county are also paying into the tax base then, right? So you're not burdening all of your, your property owners, but you are, um, kind of capturing, capturing some tax dollars from the people who live and maybe work in Brown County, uh, but are renters in that process. The flip side of that is, um, those people who own the tourist homes there who don't live in Brown County and are not paying an income tax in Brown County are getting away with a lower property tax rate on their rental home that they have there in Brown County. So there's, there's kind of two sides to that coin. It's just a choice that, at, at some point in time, the council has made in Brown County to have a higher income tax rate.
And if you want to do it, just go ahead, Jerry.
It's also, I mean, it's a trade-off. There's, I, I personally prefer lower property tax rates. And I understand there's that, there's that catch area of, you know, out of, out of, out of county ownership of in-county property, and we're not catching anything from that. But basically, what my thought comes down to is income tax, if you're, you, you're never going to be caught in a position where you're not making income to pay the tax. Because if you're paying the income tax, it means you're making income. If you're paying property tax, as a homeowner, my home is not making me any money. It's ju, it's my home. And if the val, if the property taxes go up and something happens where I don't have the income at that time, then I'm stuck with the potential of losing my house. Your house is not generating income, so to tax you on that is taxing your home value. To tax your income is taxing the income that you're actually making. If that makes sense. I'm trying to explain that the simplest way I can, and I'm not overthinking.
No, you're not.
That's, that's the benefit of income tax over property tax, is that if you're collecting income tax, you're collecting from somebody who actually is making an income. If you're collecting property tax, you're not necess, you could be actually dipping into somebody's income that's lesser than the next one members.
And our fixed income.
Yes.
People on fixed income, zero income, you still have to pay it.
Yes.
So let's say we had a lot of commercial property in, in the county, which we don't. Well, how would that affect our thinking on that, do you know?
As far as commercial?
Yeah, let's say, you know, just a higher tax rate and all that stuff. So would we be more inclined to say, okay, let's get our money from the commercial property taxes or things of that nature, just for a turn to trade off?
Versus income tax?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if a certain business is coming in and is drawing more people to live in Brown County, that would then pay the income taxes. I mean, that would be, that would be a good thing if it's attracting more people. Now, if they're just coming here and working but not living in, at that business, but not living in Brown County, then you're not really getting any benefit there because it's based off where you reside as far as.
So let's say Hard Truth, for instance, Hard Truth has been an entity that's grown strongly, but a lot of their people probably work outside the county, right?
Live outside the county.
Live outside of county. So we don't get their property, their income tax or their property.
They, they employ a lot of people in the county, don't they?
So, yeah, right, I know, but I hear they have to go through, through the surrounding counties too. I'm just seeing how that plays into the picture because it's a new entity and it seems to be growing.
You pay income tax in the county in which you reside.
Correct, which you reside. If they're residing outside the county, we don't get that. So it would be somewhat theoretic to the benefit to say, let's give them, reside in the county, that way we get property and income tax off of them, if that was possible. Just thinking, just thinking through options, it's all.
Yeah, people who live here and work anywhere are paying more taxes than people who either own property here or live somewhere else. So if you live here, basically, if you just live here, you're going to end up contributing more to the local economy, but you can own lots of properties. If you don't live here, you're not going to pay any income tax, your property tax rate is, according to Jerry, very, very, very low. And so, yeah, it's, it's about living here in, in terms of triggering an actual collection of service, you know, money, tax money for services that would be concerned.
While we're, while we're on that subject, the, uh, homestead, um, property tax adjustment, is that state regulated? Is that set by the state or is that something we can adjust?
No, state, and then there, I mean, there's been discussions as far as changes to that and bills and whatnot.
That's part of this we want at one point.
Yeah, so.
I'd like, I'd, I'd like to see that actually, because I would like, I would like to, the only change, I mean, if the only change we made to our property taxes was increase our homestead deduction, that would be awesome, because that helps the homeowner.
Doesn't help us, does it?
No, well, it does, because it keeps our levy the same. Our levy would stay the same, so that, like that bucket of water, you take one-
Yeah, I mean, it's-
It's all going to find its own level.
Hypothetically, if you only changed the homestead deduction, say you increased that, which is going to drop, you know, the overall net assessed value, your property tax levy is going to be growing still at that four percent. So essentially, if that's the only thing you changed and you guys still took your maximum levy, your rate's just going to go up, your tax rate. If that was the only thing you changed was on that side.
The rate for home, primary homeowners will actually, what they pay will actually go down because their homestead credit would, would increase.
Well, I, I mean, so their overall net assessed value, the net that they're, they're paying taxes on, yes, that's decreasing, but if the rate goes from thirty cents to forty cents, I mean, they may still, I mean, pay roughly the same if, I mean, it's just the way the math works, I guess, with tax rates maybe.
It would depend on the percentage, on the, on the ratio of primary homeowners to, say, out of, out of county investment property owners. If we have, if, because what, what do we have? How many, how many, uh?
First homes, three, four hundred, about three fifteen.
So kind of what would happen is if we increase, if we increase the homestead deduction, more of that would fall on some of the investment property and out of county.
Potentially. But I, I wouldn't look at it as far as just strictly, you know, homeowners would pay less just because the rate would go up. Now, if you guys were in a higher circuit breaker community and there was tax caps and that happened, then, then yeah, I mean, potentially it, it helps, but then it's just going to hurt, hurt people at the unit level, like the county, you're going to end up receiving, you know, less property taxes because circuit breakers going up. But you guys aren't in that scenario now, but, but yeah, this is the kind of stuff that they do, but it's like they throw in a million different things and different bills and there's all kinds of different stuff going on that can affect it different ways. And, um, so yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of bills out there.
Yeah, good, I mean, to your point though, by the end of April, we should know for sure-
Yeah.
What the answer is and we, you know, we can go from there. But in the meantime, I think we just estimate no growth, zero growth quotient, and then we can always go up from there.
So diving back into this, um, a lot of different, the, different options for, for income taxes. There's, um, certain income taxes that fall under the expenditure rate, um, which is capped at two point five percent. So you have all these different, um, expenditure rates. Certified shares, um, which that is, um, received into your general fund. You guys do have certified shares rate of, um, one percent. Public safety, um, which, let me go back, certified shares, that's going to, you know, all the different units, you know, cities, towns, counties, schools even get like a, a portion, townships. Um, so that's spread out amongst pretty much all the, all the units within the county. Uh, public safety, you guys have-
Just to clarify, what do you define as units again? Because it's generally taxing, right?
Taxing units, so counties or cities, townships.
We basically have one municipality or the other.
Yeah, you guys are-
Libraries, solid waste.
Yeah, and I, I have a different slide in the future that shows-
Entities, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, you know, library, you have a township, fire protection district, solid waste, and then, yeah, Nashville townships, Brown County, I mean, that's cool.
So fire protection district in Hamlin is getting that, a portion of that one percent income tax rate set by the council, correct?
The one percent, oh, yes, sorry, yeah.
So yeah, yeah.
So yeah, public safety, you guys have, um, let's chart down here, point two five percent. So, and I'll go ahead and, you know, explain this. So obviously, you guys, you guys are the lit council. I mean, it, you guys were in old Cagit County, county adjusted gross income tax, so the county council-
Okay, clarify lit and Cagit, this is all heavy news for the base.
So it used to be set up where there was, uh, like, counties within-
There was local income tax.
This is all local income tax. So Cagit is county adjusted gross income tax. And then there was COAT, county option income tax. Now that, and there were, most counties back then were, were Cagit versus COAT. Now, whenever this changed where it was just local income tax, like the, the council who dict, dictates the rates, if you were in old Cagit County, which you guys were, it's the county council that decides what those rates are, what the income tax rates are. County option income tax, um, less counties, but it ends up going to a lit council, which is then population-based. I'm trying to think, Monroe County may be one of them. Well, Bloomington, they have a very high population, so I mean, most of, I mean, they might have enough where they're pretty much the lit council, but you guys don't have to worry about that part. You guys, you know, are the, the lit council, or the county council is the one who decides the local income tax rates. But going back to the differences between, you know, certified shares and public safety, for example, when you guys, i- if you would decide to increase, you know, rates, um, point one percent hypothetically, on the taxpayer's side, they're paying point one percent. Now, how it gets distributed to all the different units, obviously, if you would do public safety over certified shares, Brown County's going to get more of that because it's distributed to less units. It's only like you guys in, in Nashville based off that point one percent. But if you guys would increase, you know, certified shares by point one percent, a total pot of money that that's generating is then distributed to not just Nashville and Brown County, but all the townships. So just something to, to keep in mind, uh, as far as, you know, whenever, you know, down the road, if you guys decide to, to make changes and, and whatnot. And we can always do, you know, run projections for you as far as if you want to look at different rates and, and what that would generate for all the different units within the county, but.
So I think, I was just asking a question, you know, you got one, two, three, four, five different income tax type buckets there, certified shares, levy, public safety, income, all the property tax relief. They're each assess their own tax rate and, and kind of to your point, you know, so let's just say you took point five percent out of certified shares and you put it into property tax relief, you added it to property tax relief, but you're going to be, and that's probably a unique example, but- you're gonna be, and that's probably a unique example, but my point, my question is, are you, do each of these buckets tax different people? Or are all the same people taxed, it just goes to somewhere different?
The latter.
Okay.
Yes. I would, and, which I'm gonna get into, the, the PTR, the, the property tax relief, that's actually, it's outside of the expenditure rate. That one is, it's a little bit, no, it's, it's a lot different. It is a relief on the, the property tax bill side, so the taxpayer is still gonna pay, you know, that income tax rate, which it's point five percent for you guys, but then that ends up being a benefit on the property, the property tax bill side, where they're paid over here, but then it ends up decreasing what their property tax bill is, depending on. And you can allocate, I'd have to look at the detail for you guys, but as far as how that property tax relief is distributed between one percent property, so homeowners at two percent, which is like rental and ag versus three percent, which is, you know, business, commercial. And that's, with your guys' circuit breaker being pretty much non-existent outside of over sixty-five, that is, like, I mean, it's a full on blown benefit on the property tax bill side. It's very, very beneficial on the unit side, so Brown County, for example, in high circuit breaker communities, where they're already at the cap, say their tax bill is fifteen hundred dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home, so it's, homeowners are capped at one percent, so the most that they can pay, one percent of a hundred thousand is one thousand dollars. Say the tax bill, based off of the deductions, the rate, is fifteen hundred dollars, well, they're only paying a thousand, so five hundred dollars is circuit breaker loss. So in a high circuit breaker community, whenever you do property tax relief, and say it ends up being a hundred dollars is allocated to, you know, this particular scenario, the taxpayer is not really getting a benefit in that scenario, because they're still paying a thousand, but you guys are able to collect a hundred dollars more of that circuit breaker loss. So I, I know you just gave the example, as far as if you allocated more, you know, certified shares to, to property tax relief, I mean, there is, property tax relief is, is exactly what it sounds like, property tax relief. So just keep it in mind whenever you're doing that stuff, which, on top of you guys having a very low tax rate, you guys also have point five percent of property tax relief, so that's, you know, even lower than the property tax.
Did you help us, I mean, it seems to me that's a, this is an area we need to revisit in terms of the distribution. If the tax is the tax, and everybody's taxed by it anyway, it just depends on where it goes and how it's utilized. And we need to allocate more for public safety, for tax relief, you know, I like those options, right? And economic development must go into our ed, economic development, income tax fund.
Yep.
And so, you know, we, we're not using that, it doesn't seem to be, for economic development. And so I'm wondering, we're using it for everything else, right? I assume that's pretty open to use, flexible use.
Yeah, it is.
Has been changed where you can use economic development for pretty much any.
But, I mean, if the council's gonna tax the public and we are prioritizing where the public's money is going, public safety seems to be kind of a priority right now for the public, and so maybe we should consider something like that in tax relief as well.
Yeah, and there's, there's so much fun flexibility, we like to use that term as far as, like, being able to shift stuff around. So hypothetically, you know, you increase public safety and it's like, well, it's only public safety, well, you're then able to potentially shift expenditures out of the general fund into the public safety fund. So there is, you know, some fun flexibility and some maneuvering that you can do. But yeah, kind of explain the, the PTR, let's see here.
How are we gonna be potentially affected by the sixty-five and older circuit breaker? If, I don't know, we're gonna, we're gonna be impacted by that pretty severely if they, if they eliminate the property tax on sixty-five and older, what, how does that affect us?
If they eliminate.
Jerry, I could, I mean, just, I just asked this of our state folks to clarify the budget impacts of SB one and the senior tax credit rates, because we are extremely senior, I was worried about that as well, and they said incorporate it into the number we're seeing, so now it's like.
Well, I mean, is that going to give us a circuit breaker factor with sixty-five and older?
I mean, if they, if they make changes to the over sixty-five and say, there's different thresholds, like depending on the value of the home or the income, but if they, if they would change anything where more people would hit that cap, then, I mean, now the over sixty-five credit's gonna increase, which would decrease your property tax levy. I don't know the exact amount, what it would do.
Could actually make the circuit breaker effect throughout.
Now, we've done parcel level, like, detail as far as, I mean, we've done that, we've done with some of these other scenarios with AIM, which we could run that. I, I would just, at this point, just wait until, like, we see what actually happens and then, if we need to run, like, a parcel level. I'd hate to do it right now and spend the time on it and then all of a sudden that gets thrown out and then you guys, because it, I mean, we, we could do it pretty quickly to let you know that more of the exact number. I'd just hate to spend time on that and bill you guys and then it not be worth it. So then some of these other ones, we just, we show the lowest rate, the highest rate, the average. So let's, so supplemental lit, you guys, I believe I sent it out on an email, I can't remember if it was just to the finance committee, but what supplemental lit is, you have your, your county's trust account, you know, that the state, you know, keeps, and it's got this, you know, running balance in it. Well, if anything over the fifteen percent within that, the state will send out a, a one-time distribution. It's usually in, like, late May, somewhere around, you know, late May, early June that you'll get that. And you guys have received that the last, like, five years, you're expected to receive it this year. If I remember correctly, what the state will first do is, they send out, like, the total amount that's gonna be distributed, and they don't tell you how much is going to, at first, each unit and each income tax type, whether it's certified shares, public safety. We have a database and, and we ran it quickly for you guys to give you kind of a ballpark number. It looked like, if I remember correctly, it was gonna be roughly three hundred grand for certified shares that were gonna go into the general fund, and then public safety and LITD, which go into those individual funds, was roughly a hundred grand. So you might get, you should get, like, roughly five hundred thousand dollars in one-time distribution, which is outside of your monthly distributions that you get, you know, that are certified. So that, that's nice, and I don't know what you guys did during, you know, the budget process, but on our side, even though that you guys have received this one-time distribution, you know, the last five years, we never project that in revenues, hate to build a budget, especially.
It's overtime.
Yeah, based on operations of this coming in and then not coming in, so it's just not icing on the cake, you know, so to speak.
I believe that's what Greg referred to when he talked about the pennies from heaven.
Pennies from heaven.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's, that's what he was referring to, is the, is the, the lit trust balance.
So, yeah, you guys, good standing there and should be receiving, you know, that late May.
You just mentioned five years, you said, what does that mean?
I looked back historically to see, like, and I know it at least looks like the last, and it might include twenty-five, but the last twenty, or five years, you've actually received this lit, this one-time distribution, so the trust account balance is in good, you know, shape and standing. I was just curious how many, like, historical years, and I think I went back at least five, and you've, you guys have been receiving it.
Is that a reflection of our income tax collections increasing over the last five years?
I mean, yeah, it, it, it can, and then more, more people, like we were talking about, getting people to actually come here versus working outside of the county and just working here and.
Yeah, we got brought in, and so we've seen this explosion of housing permits, people moving into those homes, making higher wages. Has contributed, that sounds like, that's good.
So real quick on, you know, how, how it works, on slide twelve. So it's actually paid on a state fiscal year, so lit is paid based on the county, and what you reside, as you talked about, deposited into your county's trust account. So it's actually, whenever they go through the certifications, it's paid whenever they, it's taken out of the, the taxpayer's check. It's July first, this is all for certified distributions for twenty twenty-five, so we backed into that. So it's actually July first of twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And then before August second, the state budget agency determines the twenty twenty-five lit distributions based off of the twenty twenty-four state fiscal year. It's supposed to by October first, and, and they'll, they do send out, like, estimates, you know, right around August, it's not exactly August second. But they can fluctuate, things can change, but it's supposed to be certified by October first. A lot of times they don't change much, but it would be nice if they certified them a little bit earlier, because, I mean, that's, especially for you guys, pretty much your main, or your top revenue source is your income taxes, and you're well into, you know, the budget process and, and through multiple meetings and as far as, like, is the budget fundable, so it'd be nice if they certified them a little bit sooner, but they certify them October first. And then from there, I, I mentioned this briefly, like, once it's certified and we get into this year, the county auditor distributes the lit monthly to, you know, each, each unit, you guys included. So that is one of the nice things about income taxes versus property taxes. Pretty much property taxes are, you know, twice a year, you can try to get early draws and whatnot, but it's pretty much, you're getting it June and you're waiting six months, you're waiting six months until the next settlement, with income taxes, you're getting it monthly. So if you do run into anything like cash flow issues, it, it helps that you're getting that, you know, every single month, versus having to wait multiple months to get a big chunk of revenue. This slide thirteen just shows the twenty twenty-five, this is your guys' certified amounts for each one, and I'll explain levy freeze on the next slide here. But certified shares, you guys, a little bit over three point three million. The total amount is four point eight million, that's for all units, and you can see the percent of that, you guys get sixty-nine percent. So the far right column, that has to do with what I mentioned previously as far as certified shares, it's going to pretty much all the units in the county versus, you know, public safety, LITD going to less clients, or clients, less units. Levy freeze, it's, which I'll explain on this next page, it has its own rate also. And we'll, let's just, let's just turn the page here and I can, we can look at this levy freeze, because it's a little bit more confusing and a little bit harder to maybe grasp, and we may have to take, you know, more time on, on this. But you guys, you know, you currently have an income tax rate for, for levy freeze.
What's levy freeze?
Which my next point is, essentially, this was implemented years ago to, and I'll explain this after I get this. Implemented years ago to freeze the growth of its property tax levy and instead adopt, adopt an income tax rate to replace that growth in property tax levy. So going back to the maximum levy and how that was growing, you know, four percent roughly, we'll just say every year. Instead of that growing four percent, you froze that growth, it did not grow at all. In order to make up for that difference, and this could be multiple years, you guys do an income tax rate, which is this lit levy freeze. So it freezes that property tax levy growth and you are subsidizing it, so to speak, with an income tax rate. Which your guys' total amount for this, for Brown County, and that's, this is this chart, and this is for, this is the twenty twenty-five chart. The total amount that you guys ended up freezing in property taxes was one, you guys are on the first line here, it's levy freeze amount, sorry, it's a little small. You know, a little over one point five million dollars. So that's the amount, and this goes into your guys' general fund. So this, this levy freeze rate, it's collected and, you know, distributed to all of these units, but this column here is the amount that, it does not change, that's the amount that you guys, you know, receive and all these other units receive. If we go over two columns where it says levy freeze distribution, that is the amount that is generated based off of whatever rate that you guys currently have. So you guys, and if the levy freeze amount here, guys, is one point five, six million, if that's more than what the levy freeze distribution is, you guys have a lit stabilization fund. So it's kind of like a holding account, where if the rate that you guys have in place for that year doesn't generate, generate enough to cover this amount, you guys can dip into that lit stabilization to make up this part difference. On the flip side.
Hold on, the lit stabilization is the fifteen percent, the stable, oh, it's different.
This is different, yeah, this is different, this is, this is specifically for the levy freeze, the stabilization.
And I, I wanna go back sometime and find out what's the value of levy freeze, why should we do it, why should we not do it?
We're not, we're not.
Isn't it a guarantee that you can't do it every so often?
Well, I mean, it just, I guess, it kind of goes back to the same things that we were talking about with our initial question about the value of doing a higher income tax rate versus property tax rate. Because essentially, you, otherwise your levy, your property tax levy for your maximum levy funds would be, you know, much higher, but it's not because you have the income tax rate over here covering that. So if you would have never done it hypothetically, your property tax levy, that maximum levy that's roughly four million would be one, yeah, five and a half million.
We'd have a higher, we'd have higher property taxes.
So, so, yeah, for the, so for this year, for twenty twenty-five, which you guys did some rate changes, which I was very happy to see, and I'll explain that in a little bit more detail, because it's another tool that you guys have. In twenty twenty-four, the rate that you guys had for the levy freeze, it generated more than what you guys had to pay out to yourselves and all the other units. So it actually increases the lit stabilization fund, that, that balance. Now going into twenty twenty-five, you guys lowered your, your levy freeze rate and increased your LITD rate, which was good. Your guys' cash balance in your lit stabilization fund was very good. Last year it got the lit supplemental, so lit supplemental goes to levy freeze also, that just goes in your stabilization fund. So it was, and that cash that's in there, like, you, you can't do anything with it unless, like, the way that you can is what you guys just did. You lowered the rate for the levy freeze, you increased it in LITD, and you are now generating substantially more money in LITD that you can actually get your hands on and use for services. So it's one, so for this, like, like I said, it's, it's a tool, you need to keep track of what your lit stabilization fund is and how, how much you're generating from your current lit levy freeze amount and versus how much you have to actually distribute out. And if it keeps growing, the lit stabilization, then you're gonna make some, you know, decisions as far as, hey, do we want to, you know, increase LITD, or do we want to decrease levy freeze a little bit and, and shift it over to lit public safety? I will point out that this difference that you're under based off of even decreasing that rate of, you know, it's this far right column, the two hundred and twelve, that you would otherwise have to take, take from your lit stabilization fund. Well, in twenty twenty-five, you're getting lit supplemental, that one-time distribution, levy freeze is receiving that also, and what we calculated, it's actually a little bit more than this two hundred and twelve thousand, so you'll be able to receipt that in there also, so you're not even eating into your lit stabilization. And based off of the annual report, when I looked at it, the. And based off of the annual report, when I looked at it, the year-end balance for the lit stabilization was, you know, over a million dollars.
Should we, should we include that type of fund in our operational balance reserve policy? You know, where we say, hey, we don't want to double up that 10%.
For the lit stabilization?
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there are lots of funds out there. A lot of times people confuse, oh, you can only look at the general fund to determine what your operation.
I don't think it would be a bad idea to, to have a policy in place as far as where you want to keep that. Um, let me look at the statute on that too, to see if there's anything, um, stipulations as far as like, how low that can go. Because obviously you're not going to want to decrease your levy freeze amount so much where your stabilization fund, let's say hypothetically, it's not in good standing and like, so there may be some statute as far as.
I guess my point there was more accounting for that million dollar fund as we look at the county's overall operational funding reserves and our target amount of 15%.
I would, I would leave it out of that.
You would, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the downside of that is if, that's not a reserve fund that we can just go into and get money. Is it not locked up way away from us?
The only way would be what you guys just did with your rate changes.
Okay.
So you decreased your levy freeze rate, which potentially would dip into the lit stabilization, which it looks like it won't because of lit supplemental, and you increased LIDD and that's money that you will, you know, receive.
Which is why we did that because that's the only way to access those funds.
So in other words, our income taxes collected throughout the county of wage earners are increasing and we're collecting more money than the state is, you know, we're above, and so income is going up, probably new residents, and that's helping us offset that.
Yeah, because there, even though you guys decreased your rate, um, for levy freeze and it's short in 2025, potentially because of just the total growth of like, of income pack, income taxes in general, that, that difference there of 212,000, maybe if you guys keep the rates the same, it could be 160,000 and like, getting closer to balance, even though it's a lower rate just because of the overall growth of the county. But it's definitely something that, like, to keep an eye on and, and to use as far as like, if you, if we see the levy freeze stabilization fund continues to, you know, increase. Because like I mentioned, the only way is to change those rates to kind of dip into that. And then I, this is, I just wanted to show you like the difference, um, from 24 to 25 based off of doing this.
Slide 15.
Yeah, sorry. Slide 15. Um, so I have the rates breakdown, and this is just the expenditure rate. PTR is outside of it. Um, what that generated, this is your share, the county's share, not total of all units, in 24 versus 25. Now, obviously, there's just some growth in general from 24 to 25. As you can see, when, you know, 1% for certified shares, from 24 to 25 grew, you know, 260,000 roughly. But you can see the levy freeze amount. So that 1.8 million in levy freeze in 2024, that, the amount that you actually had to cover was 1.6 or 1.56 million. So any of that difference goes in the lit stabilization fund. That, that's, goes across all units. So you were high there. You guys elected to decrease that by 0.15% or, um, and it decreased the distribution to almost 1.4 million. Um, and at the same time, public safety rates stay the same. You guys elected to increase LIDD from 0.25 to 0.4%. So your distribution, certified distributions from 24 to 25 went from a little over a million dollars to almost 1.8 million, just by that change. So that's your way of dipping into that lit stabilization fund. Um, so that was, I mean, that was a, a, a good decision there. And then, like I mentioned, you know, putting in the economic development, you guys are actually getting a higher percent share of, of that versus the other.
If our lit stabilization fund, like you said earlier, if it drops down to a certain amount, will DLG up or the state come in and say, you have to raise your levy freeze?
I, I want to look at, at the statute. That's why whenever Scott was asking his question, I, I, I want to see because I would think there'd have to be something in place because they wouldn't want you to decrease it so much where you can't pay for.
Yeah, otherwise we can just take that down to like zero.
But aren't they already, aren't they already keeping 15% of our income tax money?
Yeah, this is, this is diff, this is different, the levy free stuff versus what.
Stables, isn't that an income tax fund that they're keeping?
Well, they hold like, the county's like trust account, which has, you know, all the income taxes as a, as a total, which part of it is, is levy freeze because you guys are getting part of that back and, you know, this year in May, you guys have this story.
I guess my point is that.
Stabilization is a, it's different than, I guess.
It's different, but my point is they're keeping 15% of our taxpayer money already as a state to protect us against ourselves. And so sure, they're not going to like double, you know, we don't need a 50% reserve, you know, we may need that money for public safety or whatever. So anyway.
All right. So what happens to this money at the end of the year?
Ask that.
What happens to the money at the end of the year that they keep if they, we don't?
Which it doesn't revert to somewhere else. It's a, it's a non-reverting fund, right?
I guess enough on what your question is, sorry.
The lit freeze money never.
Lit stand has a, the 15% that the state keeps, if it goes above 15%, then we get a distribution of that. That is where, that's the, the, the lit distribution we're talking about. The levy freeze, uh, levy freeze.
The stabilization.
Stabilization fund, that does not come back to us. It could grow to however high we let it grow. And we cannot dip into it unless we change the rate to
Yes.
underfund levy freeze so that the stabilization fund kicks in to cover that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you, you guys, like, if you look at your annual report, you have a, I don't know the exact name, but pretty much a levy free stabilization fund. You guys hold that at the county level. Um, and that's the, that's the fund that at the end of 24 had a little over a million dollars. Um, yes, um, you're correct as far as like, you really can't do anything with it like directly like, oh, we want to appropriate and spend out of that because it's, it's not just the county's money. I mean, you're holding that for all the other units too, because if you guys do a rate like you did in 2025 that is short of what amount that all the units are supposed to get, then you have to dip into that lit stabilization fund to make up that difference. Um, but in order to utilize that and not have that continue just to grow, 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 you guys can make rate changes like you did in, in 25, um, and actually receive more money in, you know, a different either certified shares, public safety, or LIDD, which you guys elected LIDD. Um, and then that potentially will decrease the lit stabilization, um, which I say potentially because you guys shouldn't decrease it this year because you're, you're getting lit supplemental. So, but yes, that's pretty much the only way to, to utilize that.
So that's what I'm trying to call clarify is just out of the position of logic and common sense. Hey, you can't go get the money. You got to go underfunded and play games to go get the money. That's government.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what, what you'd have to do.
Because that fund has one intended purpose and that's to make up, that's to supplement the levy freeze. We, if we, so we don't go deficit in that, in that taxing, uh, percentage.
But I, I will, I will check to see if there's anything in the statute as far as like, if there's a certain amount that you're supposed to hold in there. Um, and if not, I still, Scott, thank you, it'd be a good policy to have, like you mentioned, if, if you have, want to keep a certain amount in there just to be safe.
Yeah, or, I mean, I still think it's, yeah, at least know what our amount is that we tax taxpayers. I mean, we don't want to just sit on money unnecessarily, especially if we have critical needs. And especially if we're going to take out debt to pay for those critical needs versus using the cash we have. And so I want to either count that money as a part of our operating reserves or be able to use it for critical needs and not, not do both and act like it doesn't exist but tax people any way to collect it and just let it sit there. Like, it doesn't make any sense to me. Like, like it's blind, like you got a million dollars sitting there. Oh, it's not part of our operating reserves. We can't count for that. We can't use it. No, we got to take out debt to pay for the things that it can pay for. It just, I just think we need to kind of use some common sense there and the money's there and we tax people for it. So regardless of what the, you know, I, I mean, I, it's just kind of common sense thinking to me, but.
We, we have.
If that fund drops down to zero and then we underfund in the following year, what's going to happen? We're going to have to make up for that out of the general fund, correct?
That I don't know, but I think there's, there's got to be something in place where you guys can't drop that rate low enough where that would happen.
Yeah.
Um, that's what I want to check and see.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Um.
And the way this theoretically would like to be, we'd like to play out is to have in five years, 15% of rainy day type fund, you know, sitting aside. How do we move towards that with all this going on? Is the question.
Yeah.
Well, and it's kind of my point here is everybody just wants to look at the rainy day fund as our operational reserve. That's not what's happening here.
I understand.
We have, all of these funds have millions of dollars. We shouldn't take, just act like they don't exist. It's cash in our bank account. That is a reserve in most cases. We cannot just keep thinking it's only the rainy day fund. That, that's not accurate.
Well, rainy day fund is the only one.
And I'm not, I, yeah, it actually has a lot of restrictions on it and, and it's, and, and these other funds don't. And so we just need to eyes wide open.
Well, the lit stabilization fund has a lot of restrictions.
Well, yeah, but what are those restrictions? What is, you know, but just, you know, we keep collecting these funds. We need to be able to put them to use. And you're going to help us kind of sort out some of this. But I think we should keep moving. What do you think, Gary?
Go ahead.
Yeah, some of these.
Joel's way ahead of us here, so and Patrick.
Oh, I know. They're bored. This is, they're hard.
Um, not as much detail.
Heard of most of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Still trying to figure out how to put it together.
It's not simple.
That's, that's the objective is for you to be able to put it together. I mean, a new person to be able to put it together. That's the real objective. So that's why if you have questions, feel free to ask them. There's no stupid questions.
Yeah, contrary to.
Government is, like you say, a convoluted thing, the way it works.
Yeah, it's not super simple. I mean, the paper may say, oh, this is simple and everyone up here should understand in-depth tax policy. Whether you're like Patrick who asked Susan a couple of weeks ago, a simple question about explaining what she thought, you know, and she, unlike what was reported in the paper, that wasn't me asking questions. Patrick, he's brand new on the council. He's just getting started and she was responding to Patrick, not me. And in terms of, man, Patrick, this is some in-depth stuff. We've got a lot to learn here. There's no one at this table that's a taxing policy expert, right? No county in the state has those people typically. That's why they hire people like you, right? Extremely complicated. And so especially as, as the attorney was saying to Patrick, not me, Steve Blernicker.
Do you ever find a council that really knows what's going on and don't need you guys? Does that happen very often?
Um, uh, there's, there's some that, that really.
How do you, how do you find one that goes?
Picks things up and, and stuff. Like I told you during the finance committee meeting, I mean, we kind of pride ourselves on educating more. Um, you would think that like, oh, if we don't, you need us more. We're not like that. We want you guys to be able to learn as much as possible, have settings like this, um, educate yourselves so that when, you know, because you're going to get questions from taxpayers all the time and we want you guys to be able to make informed decisions. We just want to help equip you with that knowledge and, and steer you in the right, you know, direction and then, you know, focus on big projects, planning and stuff and stay, you know, not getting in the weeds and stuff, but we've, we've been in these scenarios before and we try to educate as much as what we can. And, um, we always refer to Jackson County like, it's pretty much the well-oiled machine now. It was not, uh, you know, years and years ago. I mean, that was prior to me even being there, but I mean, it takes time.
Fun too. If you get into like Indianapolis, Marion County, they've got an entire complex of bureaucracy and employees that do this and are the consistent, you know, backup to what council does. And they come in and just basically tell city county council, okay, this is what we got, this is what we got, this is what needs to be done, this is what needs to be done. And they just like.
County administrators, professional level staff, that, I mean, that's the other way to do it.
We can't, we can't afford it.
Yeah, I mean, it's more expensive.
We have a question for like, one of our constituents.
Right. Hey, the question was, Detective Burton, he said that the, the state.
Can you turn your mic on?
Identify yourself, turn on your mic.
We're talking to it one of them.
Is green light on? This is Bill Kane.
Tap on it, see if it works.
Uh, it's red.
On the end.
Tap on the end.
What's that?
Yeah, we hold it close because we like to.
All right. So my name is Bill Kane. I was talking to Eric Burton, the highway superintendent. He was saying that the state collects the gas tax, but he has no place in his budget to receive it. And wanted to explore that to see if there's any additional highway funds.
Yeah, I mean, actually the next slide 16 was some other funding sources, which is, you know, from state and federal level. And MBH, which MBH stands for motor vehicle highway distributions, which is pretty much the, the, the gas tax. Um, and it is a primary funding source for highways. Now, that distribution, well, there's actually two different. Now there's MBH and then MBH restricted. Um, now.
Is that the electric car tax?
The electric, no, like they, units were, because you, you think of, you know, getting this MBH distributions, like you think the, the thought process behind it, like, oh, roads and, you know, work on paving. And a lot of units were using it more just strictly for like personal services and so on. Um, so they ended up restricting it where 50% of that MBH distribution went to regular MBH fund and then 50% into your operating, which then that, or you're restricted. And that was restricted pretty much for, for paving. So it almost forced people to at least, or units to, to use it on, you know, paving and construction of roads and so on and so forth. Um, but they should, I mean, the gas taxes is the MBH distribution. So that, I mean, that should, that is received into your MBH fund. So.
It's there. It's just.
It's not called, it's not called gas tax. It's called.
He's recovering it as much as he can possibly get. He doesn't know that name. That's, that's.
Yeah.
It comes in an under MBH.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you have an opportunity to talk to Eric, let's head.
Thanks. Appreciate the clarification.
And I can send you the distribution formula. It is nuts with the gas tax. So, and how it like.
And it doesn't depend upon how many gas stations we have in the county. It's distributed statewide, 1%. So it's complicated.
Yeah, it's, it's very complicated.
It's based on road mileage and all that stuff?
Yes. Um, and then like I saw there was one bill and I don't know if it was, if it's still through, but they talked about distributing it based off, not like road miles, but miles traveled.
Yeah.
But then how, I couldn't grasp how they were going to do that, but anyways.
It would help Indianapolis greatly and screw us just as greatly.
There, there is a premium for electric cars. So I have an electric car and now I've got a little excise tax that says, give me 230 bucks.
Well, that's a different highway fund.
Yeah.
That goes into.
Should we get that one as well?
Well, and then I, there's, uh, you guys have will tax. Um, and then even with all these property taxes, I mean, there's other like intergovernmental taxes, what we call them, like financial institution tax, excise tax, see that, yep.
Where can Bill go to educate himself on the calculation, what's included in the MBH? Would that be the Indiana Department of Transportation? Would that be?
I'm trying to think where I. Is that something where I, can I send you like one of you guys the link to, to send on to him? Because I, I want to track it down. Okay.
Hey, one more question, my friend.
Go ahead.
Do you have a PDF of this?
Yes.
Because this is very informative and Jimmy and I are sharing it, so.
Yeah. I mean, if you guys are good with it, I have another copy.
Do you have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Jim would charge you 20 bucks for that.
I'm sure this is more than 20 bucks.
Oh, I think so, yeah. Good. All right. What do you got? Slide 17?
Yeah, um, and I did want to say, skimming through these, just generic funding sources. Once we get your guys' financial plan updated and we show you all your different funds and literally the revenues coming in there, we can talk about them even more. So you guys might have some that are. So you guys might have some that are, you know, outside of what I'm listing. These are just kind of big picture that were from a different educational thing that we did with AIC. But there's food and beverage, which I haven't looked at much detail at your guys' stuff. Might be a small amount.
Town collects it, we don't have.
But.
I'd skip it.
Okay. And, and then innkeeper's tax, you guys have that? I know that you were talking about potential changes there increases.
Pass halfway through the session. I will tell you, there was some good testimony from Park County in the budget bill hearing yesterday. And Park County Councilman described how they pay for covered bridges and public safety with their increase in innkeeper's tax. And they fund with their additional three percent that they passed a few years ago. They fund fire and, you know, historic preservation.
So can you guys elect where that goes? Cause I thought during the finance committee meeting, like, does, does most of it go to like the visitor convention?
Yeah, the CVC is the county committee and the tax that the county passes goes to the CVC. And then I, and then the CVC distributes the funding.
Okay.
Primarily the CVB and it stays in tourism.
Yep.
What we were hoping to do was maybe get the new, the new increase on that devoted to specifically public safety, but the wording of it has gotten changed in the process to where all we did was we now can increase the innkeeper's tax from five percent to eight percent, but it doesn't give us any, any of the flexibility to be able to use it for public safety.
I don't think that's true. No, I don't think that's true. In fact, Park County is doing the exact same thing we're talking about. So there are other counties that are doing all, all different kinds of things with it.
I mean, it doesn't change the wording.
The bill is the same, it just allows us to collect more.
But there's the flexibility that we don't, we haven't explored.
Absolutely.
Then, I mean, there's wheel tax, which you guys have, have that going into your MBH fund.
I understand we can, you know, council asks me to look at revenues. I understand we collect a little south of half a million extra from our wheel tax if we increase that. I'm not in favor of that.
What's the prison?
Uh, I don't know, but I know we can bump it to increase four hundred and some thousand more.